We will call this meeting in the Harriman City Council to order June 6, 2017. Before we get started, we'll have a pleasure at least to the flag. Before that, we'll have a prayer by Vice Mayor Wright and then followed by the pleasure lead to the flag.
Yeah, do bow. Heavenly Father, thank you again that we have another opportunity to lead and to conduct the business for the citizens of our community. Father, we're most thankful today that no one was seriously hurt during the recent storms that came through our area and thankful for all the actions and the work done in response to the service out there and cleanup, not only the own departments here in Harriman, but all of those who volunteered and assisted from other communities and agencies. Father, we additionally thankful for the safety of everyone who participated. And maybe all recognize that we are truly blessed to live among the citizens who, first of all, care for each other and secondly, are willing to help each other when we have needs. Bless our maker tonight and each one who's in attendance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call her up, please.
Chris Haywood. Betty Holly. Tim Johnson.
Here.
Kenyon Mead.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Wright.
Here. For form, get approval for the minutes of the May 16, 2017, for the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Meade, second of Councilman Wright, Councilman Meade.
Second.
Councilman Wright. Doors open. Any corrections to waste these minutes? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Kenyon Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Need a motion to pay salaries for the month?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Russell.
My second.
Second of Councilman Johnson, Councilman Russell.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Doors open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Kenyon Mead.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, we'll hear from the delegation. If you would like to address council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir.
Bill Alexander. I'd like to thank you all. You told the board for all their hard work during this time, fire department, street department, everybody, everybody was out doing a good job, and anybody that wanted to complain, they'd have their head picked in.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to address council? Not, we'll go into reports. HEB.
Yes, sir. A couple of project updates and I'd just like to make a few comments. The gas main, all the gas main here in town has been installed, all the mains in. We're contractors working on services now, and they've actually started some paving work in the alleyways, so that'll be getting done here shortly, so all that's kind of coming together. On Swamp Pond Road, we still lack about 500 feet of the water line to finish that, and actually, the storm and this weather's kind of laid out just a little bit, but we should have it completed here just shortly. Speaking of storms, I will say, first of all, on behalf of our employees, the great work that our folks did under some trying circumstances. I've been involved in utility here for over 40 years, and I can tell you that I've never seen as widespread devastation as we had out of this storm. And as Mr. Wright alluded to in his prayers, we're thankful that nobody, none of our citizens was hurt that I'm aware of, or no fatalities in none of our workers. We were fortunate to have, to get in some additional crews to help us from some contractors and also some other utilities. We had about 50 additional men who came and worked this storm, and truthfully, I don't know what we would have been without them. When they showed up, you could see the look on our guys' faces, and they knew everything was going to be all right, because they'd already worked a couple of days in this. But I do want to say thank you. Thanks to Chief Sipko, he was a tremendous help to us, Chief Daniels, Fire Department, always there to help, the Street Department, Rome County Highway Department. The mayor and I were in contact quite a bit, tried to keep them updated on what was going on, because I knew he and you folks were probably getting a lot of phone calls. We had churches, and we'll give a full, we're gonna have a full report later this month out, but we had several churches that prepared meals for our crews and fed them, and in fact, these contract crews said they'd never been fed as good anywhere they've been, but we're in Harriman, so they were glad for that. But considering where we started on Saturday, on that Saturday night, with virtually the entire city out of power to, by Friday, having virtually everybody back on, a few isolated cases, I thought it was a tremendous effort. Dudley, thank you. Dudley put some information out for us and so forth on Channel 12, that was great help. So just thanks to everybody, appreciate your support. It's been a tough time, but at least times come. I was telling somebody recently, I said, you know, you kind of look at the world, you see the news every day, and you think things have kind of gone to hell in a handbasket, so to speak, but, you know, then when you see something like this, and you see the community pulled together, and people coming volunteer to help, and all that kind of thing, it really makes you feel good about, at least where we live. I can't speak to other parts of the world, but we live in a good community, so thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions or anything anybody has to say.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Pym?
I'd say on behalf of the board, as I told you all last night, we're very appreciative of the hard work that your employees put in. It shows great leadership from where you all are at, and we thank you all, and I know the citizens here.
Fire Department?
Very long thing I got, y'all got the round logs in front of y'all. Bill kind of stopped my speech there, but I'm very thankful for the teamwork that was shown during that storm, everybody working together. I mean, it was very dangerous that night, but nobody backed down, Police Department, Street Department, everybody worked together, and it was just great. And I'm very thankful to be a servant, an assistant to Harriman, and work for the Fire Department.
Anybody have anything for Chief?
Thanks, sir.
Chief Park?
Sir. I apologize for not having the responsive staffs ready for you. The storm itself has also put us a little behind on things we were doing, but I will tell you that, just as a forecast, we did a little change in our routine with traffic. I was hearing some complaints about the tickets, so let's see what happens. Well, I will tell you that we backed off on the tickets, and the actions are out. So I will leave you with this comment on that, that the fact that you might be receiving complaints from citizens about tickets doesn't mean we're doing the wrong thing. Just know that there is a direct correlation to certain hot spots, we running tickets, that reduces collisions. There's just no other way around it, so that's just the truth of the matter. Regarding the storm, I have been, I have vast experience with a lot of critical incidents, and I will tell you that this was a pretty major one. I came from the fires of California, and this was a lot like the devastation area. This was more devastating, I think, than most citizens know. I don't think most people know the kind of effort, work put in. Chief Daniels himself and his crew out there actually saw enough logs with what turned out to be dull blades, nevertheless. They were out there, HEB's guys were helping us move trees to try and get traffic going so we could get emergency vehicles through. The Assistant Police Chief was out there, he brought in his chainsaw, and he was running chainsaws with drac out there. I mean, everybody pulled together. Our initial response was dealing with the roadwork, and I don't think anybody knew at that time just how bad the devastation was. We did a survey, I want to compliment Chief Daniels, when I got a chance to get a little survey going, realized just how dark everything was, I asked Chief Daniels to put together an instant command, and within about 10 minutes, we had a full instant command system running, and we were able to check every street and make sure that we had nobody that had a house in their, or a tree in their house, or on their car, that they were trapped, and there was lots of damage, but there were no persons found to be trapped, and I want to credit Chief Daniels for running an excellent show that night, and getting that done. The coordination with Heath and your office, getting us, keeping me updated, knowing how we could help doing that. And then finally, I want to say, as things sort of kind of ran through my office on this incident, Mr. Mayor, the support from you, and going out with you on Monday and taking that trip to drive around and see what we had, and once we realized in discussions with Heath and your folks that power may not be on for four or five days, and that was also hurting the water, I think we had a right cross established, a place established, and then rolling, and we were up with a shelter within two hours, and that's a credit to the leadership in town, so I appreciate your backing on that, and everybody involved in this. I saw HEB working themselves off, I saw them up hours and hours and hours, and the chief was up for 50 hours straight. Most people have no idea how bad the devastation was and how hard everybody worked, and it's a compliment to you all for getting all that done, so nicely done. And I'll take any questions you have.
Any question for the chief?
Oh, last thing. We have, on the positive, we have now taken custody of our second marked new police car, so if you want to see him, today they're busy, I couldn't get one here tonight, because they're operating on something right now, but you'll see a new black and white SUV all around town, you'll see two of them now, so they're coming in one at a time. So thank you everyone for those.
And our cadets are about to leave.
And, yes, sir, thank you for that. We're going this Friday morning at 10:00 a.m. If anybody would like to go, it's a long drive, but Walter State Community College Police Academy, we have our four trainees graduating. The mayor and I will be there with Assistant Chief and some others, and it's going to be a nice event, and we're looking forward, wow, we're looking forward to having these guys on this tree. We're short-staffed, and we need them, so we're happy to have them. Thanks, sir.
Special events?
Well, first, I was going to talk to you all about Farmer's Market, which we opened up this past Saturday, and it went pretty well, and we're actually rolling out, this year we have a logo for the Farmer's Market, we got these nice bags made, so anybody that comes and buys something at the Farmer's Market will be getting these while we have them, and I'm looking at trying to order more, because I think they turned out really, really well. And that is, we will have it tomorrow, Wednesday, from 2:00 to 5:00, and Saturdays from 8:00 to noon, and it just varies kind of depending on the season. I know Teresa came out for tomatoes, and tomatoes aren't quite in yet, but they did have a lot of, there was beets and lettuce and...
Jams are great.
Yeah, they had, the one guy makes jams and jellies, another girl makes like little towels and aprons, and we have a honey guy, so hopefully we'll be getting more farmers and more vendors in the market. We are running a promotion where you have the first two months of membership for the market for free, so we're really hoping to start growing this and getting a lot more farmers and vendors there, so we can really make it a big market. Cruisin' is Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00 down Rome Street. We're closing the road at 2:00, and then there will be a free movie at 7:00, American Gruffiti, and that's being provided by Rome State's Arts and Lecture Committee, so it'll be free. And we'll have barbecue and snowplow person both attending the Cruisin', so we'll have food available there. And we just announced yesterday that Cobbler Festival, second year we're doing it, on July 29th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at Riverfront Park. You can sign up to compete. The deadline to sign up was going to be July 11, and I hope we get a lot of applicants. I think last year we had 14, so I'm hoping to get quite, just as many as that, if not more. And Ray for Harriman's rolling around, we've already got applications out, we've already got 15 confirmed vendors, and the vendor deadline for that is August the 14th, so...
Anybody have anything for special events? Thank you, ma'am. Library?
Some reading program starts this Wednesday, so hopefully we'll have lots of children, and we'll have gifts and all sorts of prizes for them. It starts at 11:00.
Anybody have anything for Library? Have we started fixing the problem we got under yet?
No.
We're working on that, Kevin?
Yeah, the, on the water issue, it probably wouldn't be in the way of the end of the storm.
So you measure for?
We did receive notification yesterday morning that the FEMA declaration hasn't been declared for the area. People will actually be here in the county surveying the damage Thursday this week, so we'll be meeting with them further. We've been coordinating so far through county emergency operations as well as TMA. We've worked with them and put together an initial damage estimate for the city of Harriman, roughly $200,000. The eventual number might go up or down from that, but that's related to the initial response and debris that has been a little bit related going forward. I don't have, the most recent numbers I have is the end of the day Friday, so Tuesday through Friday of the last week, we had hauled off 48 dump truck loads of debris, and we expect that same amount to be ongoing for a couple of weeks at least. Couple of positive notes, we met with THDA yesterday, it's a very interesting morning, and have been awarded a home grant of $500,000. That's something that is exciting, an opportunity going forward. We've also been notified by the Tennessee Municipal League that they have recognized Harriman this year for their Small City Progress Award, so that'd be for 2017. I think there's, maybe wrong, I think there's two cities in the state that received that Comcast representative will be at the meeting on June 20th at the workshop. They'll be here to discuss any issues that we want to discuss, completing franchise agreement, potential renewal of that. We anticipate that the installation of the Farmer's Market pavilion will occur in weeks of June 19th through 26th, so during those two weeks, there may be some disruption to the paved parking area adjacent to the playground equipment at Riverfront Park. We'll have to, once we prepare the foundations, barricade a portion of that off until the structure gets fully installed. The feasibility study on the hospital had really good meetings this morning with consultants who are doing that. I think they spent about five hours meeting with various staff members to discuss what potential needs the departments could be, and then spent the afternoon studying existing facilities, so they have some idea of what we have now as it relates to what we think we would need going forward to be able to serve our departments and our citizens with current services as well as maybe some new opportunities. We still have the volunteer group, Team Rubicon, that is staging out of the hospital, roughly 25 individuals there. They are here to assist our residents with needs related to the storm damage, and will probably be in the area through at least the 14th of this month. With regard to the debris that we have been stockpiling, not related to the storm, the company moved in yesterday to start that work of a week. When they come in, they may operate six days a week, but ask them to wait until the fair closed for the year out there, so that there wouldn't be disturbance, so they could come in yesterday and start that process. And the core samples that we thought we would be doing a couple of weeks ago on Margarite Drive in preparation for the project there had to be postponed, and so that should be occurring either tomorrow or the next day. Right now, it's scheduled for tomorrow, but if they don't finish up, it will roll over to the next day. That's all I have, I'd be glad to take questions.
Is there anything new on the mountain road?
I know we sent the authorization to proceed into the writing group, I would have to look at that and see where it stands. The person that they have servicing our area has changed, Todd Nash, who we've worked with in the past, he's been moved to a different region, and so we haven't established the same communications yet with the new person that's been assigned to the area.
Anyone else for C Manager? Thank you, sir. This time, we're going to old business. First item under old business is discussing possibly approve the bid for Riprock River Bank at the Riverfront Park. Kevin?
This would just be the official award of the bid, which came in at $38,600, 200 million fee to the riverbank stabilization. Shippin Builders had the low bid, and it is within the budget estimate that was projected from the bracket, the recommended award.
Who's the company again?
Shippin Builders.
Shippin?
Yeah, Shippin.
Where they located?
Bum and Bim.
Motion to approve the bid for $38,600 from Shippin Builders. Motion for Councilman Meade, second. Second for Councilman Johnson, Councilman Meade.
No, I think we've addressed it and came in under budget, so builders, anyway.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm happy that they're finally going to be able to get that fixed up down there.
Doors open for discussion. Where are they from?
They're on Bum and Bim.
Any other discussion?
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. One thing I was going to ask on that, Kevin, when are they currently on start?
They'll be ready to go anytime. TBA has had the permit for four weeks. Their projected timeframe for the TBA portion was about four to six weeks. That has to roll over to TDEC, so I feel like the TBA permit should receive any time now. I'm trying to get additional information from TDEC as to what the permitting requirement will be for them. When I first talked to TDEC directly, they seemed to indicate the process would be much more complicated. The TBA representative that I met with actually suggested just letting them handle it and submit it and send it over to TDEC, which is what we ended up doing. He did say their requirements are more stringent than what TBA's are, but felt like sending it through that way would be better, so that's basically where we're at, is needing those permits in hand, and everybody's ready to go.
Did they give a timeframe, how long it take, you know, we shut the park down while they're doing it?
I don't think everything will be shut down, there may be some areas that will be ready to close while they're in their work. I have this open in the timeframe, I don't have it up in my head.
Next item, discussing possibly approve sale of surplus fire engine to Rome County. Kevin?
Several weeks ago, council approved surplus in Engine 3. Generally, when we surplus an item listed, we'll auction that off. However, Rome County Office of Emergency Services sought us to work going to sell that piece of equipment, so the county expressed an interest in it, and so they worked with Assistant Chief Daniels to look at the equipment and made an offer to purchase it directly from the city, so that would be under, for your consideration tonight, they offered $15,000 to purchase Engine 3, which we have already surplus.
I'd like to say on behalf of that, when C Manager told me about the offer, Rome County MA is here whenever we call, and they come on scene with us, they're here fighting the fires with us, doing whatever we need, so that engine will still be used a lot inside our city, and I think it's better if we can give it to a apartment that is in our county than we send it out to someone else, so I thought it was a good thing, and I'm glad to have you in the interest of it. Need a motion to approve the sale for $15,000.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Holly, second of Councilman Meade. Councilman Holly?
Yes.
Councilman Meade?
Yes, sir.
Question?
There's no problem conveying it that way?
For another governmental agency, you can do it that way. If it were a private party, it would not be...
You understand that government moves up. Is that, Chief, is that a pretty good price?
Yes. We talked to a truck broker, and they told us if we done the repairs on it, then we'd probably get around $30,000. It's got over $16,000 worth of repairs, so it kind of equals out.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approve, approve board departments. As most of y'all know, Ed Alexander has moved outside the city, and with him moving, he was on three different boards, and we must reappoint those boards, so that's Sunday appointment tonight, the Beer Board, the BZA, and the Historical Zoning Board. On the Beer Board, I'd like to put on their chipper done, he will serve for, from July 2017 to July 2021. Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Wright?
No.
Doors open for discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. On the BZA, I'd like to put Johnny Jones, and I know there's a couple of different Johnny Joneses, but it's the one that lives in West Hills.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discussing possibly approved, approved board departments. As most of y'all know, Ed Yeljandrov has moved outside the city and with him moving, he was on three different boards and we must reappoint those boards, so that's Sunday appointment tonight, the Beer Board, the BZA, and the Historical Zoning Board. On the Beer Board, I'd like to put on there Chipper Dunn. He will serve for, from July 2017 to July 2021. Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Ryan, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Ryan.
No.
Board is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. On the BZA, I'd like to put Johnny Jones, and I know there's a couple of different Johnny Joneses, but it's the one that lives in West Hills and he coached basketball there at Hareman for a long time. His term would be from July 2017 through July 2019. Motion for Johnny Jones.
I'm making motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Councilman Holly. Board is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Historical zoning, I'd like to put Jamie Russell on there. Jones has set up Stock Hops, I think she'd be a good representative for us. Her term would be 2017 to 2018, it's just a one-year term. Motion by Councilman Ryan.
Second.
Councilman Johnson, Councilman Ryan?
No.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Board is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
I asked.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next board is the Temperance Building Committee. This committee was formed sometime back, years ago, and I think it's basically the same board that started or close to it and so we're just redoing it a little bit and looking at seven-member board. Mary Holly, Dana Jackson, Pat LeDoux, Mike Demolich, Karen Lane, Elise Porter, and Tom Coleman. And it will be for a two-year term, July 2017 to July 2019. Motion? Motion by Councilman Russell, second. Councilman Ryan, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Russell. Board is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next thing is American Council Remarks. Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
No, sir. I just want to thank y'all for all that work you did on that school. Man, especially Jeremy, I heard a lot from the workers that he was really out there giving them a lot of help. Good job.
Councilman Ryan.
I just appreciate Kevin Theresa arranging this meeting for Comcast. And so now the public knows it's a public meeting, so that's the best.
Anything else? Councilman Holly.
Thank you.
Councilman Mead.
I'd just like to say thanks to everybody that's volunteered for the boards and committees. So just, you probably get that a lot, but we are thankful for the volunteer work because there's a lot behind some of those, a lot of research you have to do, so thank you.
And basically I'm echoing the same thing to every department that we have. We did sit in the station, come to our city and I seen us step up as a team and beat diversity and we faced them eye to eye and I think we've come out on top. I don't hear a lot of negative, all I hear is positive and it's because of the employees and the leadership that is there and I want to say thank you, it makes my job and I make the council's job a lot easier. But it been that way, I'm sure Kevin's job. But we want to thank the police department, private department, the street department, HUB, the county, everybody that had a part in this, it was just a team work that worked together and it's great to see that. And we're very appreciative of the group that we have in here, the Ripcon team, and for what they're doing. The other thing that I have, real quick, I'm not going to hit on it tonight, I'm going to hit on it next meeting because our agenda was so long tonight. As I told you before, one meeting out of the month, we're going to discuss these things hanging on the board just to make sure we're standing on top of where we're supposed to be and we will hit that next meeting and we'll go over each one of them and see where we're at and what's the next step. That's all I have. New business, discussing possibly approved employee insurance plans for fiscal year 18. Kevin?
Well, it's that time of year again where we talk about insurance for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins July 1, which is the planned year that all of our policies have. And so Sarah McQuinn is back with us again this year, done a great job in the previous years and I think she has again this year. And I think she's got some handouts with some updated numbers, slightly different from what you saw in your package. Thank you.
A few more comments and then one thing in particular I want you to touch on. Essentially, with most of our plans, vision done on life, we recommend without question
renewing the proposals that have been given to us. I think on the done, it's a 3%, is that correct?
3%. You said a two-year rate guarantee.
3% increase and then that's guaranteed for 24 months, so it won't bug again this year. Primary thing is health insurance. Still think we're probably better positioned to renew with accompanying the plan that we have presently. Though we do have a competitor, Blue Cross Blue Shield, that has put in, when you look at it solely from a premium standpoint, somewhat attractive offer. So Sarah, could you talk a little bit about?
Yes, sir.
Those specifics.
Okay, if you don't mind, I want to just beg up for a minute. When we got the renewal from United Healthcare River Valley, which is our current healthcare provider insurance company, they came in with a 13%. Clearly, we reviewed it, so we can't deal with that. Went out and got competitive data, they dropped it down to 7%, which was the time we met with the officer, the business manager, the city manager, City Carter, Dr. Curly. I think that's who all was in that meeting.
One question.
And the city manager asked, let's go back one more time and see if you can get some additional discounts. So that was part of the plan, we just met early just to do our initial touch-up on where the rate increase was coming in despite having all this competitive data running through the insurance company, having them fight back and forth. Blue Cross came in with a competitive rate and then just this past week they came in with even a more competitive rate. So what we got United down to was a 4%. As you might recall, and for you all that weren't here last year, we had a pass last year, we didn't have an increase at all. So when you compound our renewals, we're looking great, particularly compared to the state plan and other plans. Cigna did come in with a plan, but they, I didn't illustrate them, they were 7% increase, which throws them out of the ballpark. So right now where we are is, the data went back to United, United came out with a 4% rate increase, which is phenomenal. Yes, Blue Cross, which is on page two, Blue Cross is a 2.81, excuse me, is a flat renewal basically. We could save $2,000 if we moved to Blue Cross, however, the plan, the plan is not as healthy as the plan that we have with United. So having said that, yes, from a fiscal standpoint, we could save a little money or with the renewal, pay a little extra, $11,000 and give the employees a much stronger plan. So the decision you all need to make as a council is, what would you like to do? And therefore then I can take the message back to the carriers and let them make their determination. United has worked beautifully for the city of Harriman, fought hard to keep it, and the fact that it's only a 4% increase, that's unheard of. Blue Cross, on the other hand, they want y'all bad, what are they going to do next year? We don't have any experience to say that they're not going to bump us up a bunch next year. It's virtually up to you what you want to do. The benefits with United are better than Blue Cross, so Blue Cross's rate should be lower than United because it's a lesser plan.
Don't you say the difference, Lon?
The, I highlighted it, if we go with United, it's $11,000 more, almost $12,000. So just, you know, and our numbers are fluid as we hire and hire and lose employees, you know, that number can fluctuate, so we've got to just go with a set number of employees that we have right now on the plan. So we're talking on page one, if we go with United, you can project about $1,000 per month in premium. Now some of that premium is paid for by employees. It's not the straight city cost because the employees pay 75% of the dependent share while the city pays 100% of the employee cost. So it's not a true hit to the city of $11,000. I should have projected that out, darn it, I wish I would have. But it, so it's going to be less than $11,000. Do you understand that concept?
I would, last week when we sent the information out, we were looking at about a $4,000 a year savings if we went with Blue Cross versus United Healthcare. With the updated quote, that differential is about $14,000 per year total premium, part of which is paid by the employees. And that's, it's all covered, employees and defendants premiums for the entire year. Based on the differential and the benefits, I know as a group, we all recommend it with $4,000 staying with United Healthcare. Dr. Curly hasn't had an opportunity to see the updated numbers, but I would still recommend it's less than $1,000 a month, still renew with United Healthcare based on the difference in the benefits and premium. So it would be, our recommendation would be to renew all of our plans with the current company that's presented.
And just a quick snapshot on the differentials and the benefits, it potentially could cost the employees over $1,000 more a year in benefits to go with Blue Cross. So yes, we would save a little bit of money, but the employees would assume an additional $1,000 per year risk if we go with Blue Cross.
As United did date, are they the ones that stayed at 4%?
Yes, sir. Is United the one that stayed at 4%?
Yeah.
Yes, they started out at 13 and we chiseled it down to 4%.
That's, that's good. That's real good.
That's great.
And that's, because they didn't raise the rate last year, that's just, that's not just 4% over our rate 12 months ago, that's just 4% over what we were paying 20 months ago.
Yes.
So, so the employee benefits are essentially the same?
No. The benefits with Blue Cross could potentially cost an employee $1,000.
I understand that, but...
With, if we renew with United at 4% increase, it's the exact same plan, exact same benefits, same company, same network, everything that we get.
But looking at this, both plans are about, look about the same according to, is that the most?
They vary, if you look at the out-of-pocket costs, that's where the differential comes in. So after one means, so let's just use a claim. If we have a claim of $10,000 starting July 1 and we're with United, that employee is going to experience the $2,500 deductible, of which the city pays 2250 because we have the HRA in there, all right? And then the employee is, for the rest of the year, everything's paid at 100% because the out-of-pocket is at 2,500. It's a great plan. If we were to go to Blue Cross, that varies, that changes. And part of that is because the prescription benefits are going to change, even though they look similar, drugs that are in a current middle tier could go to the high tier or vice versa, we could have some changes there. Plus the fact that that employee is going to be out of pocket up to 500, up to $3,000. So after that $2,500 deductible, of which the city pays 2250, the employee has to meet the additional amount. The other differential is with United, we have a huge network. With Blue Cross, the network is their S network. Yes, it is a large network, but it's not their largest network. If we would have picked Blue Cross's largest network, it would have cost us 18 to 20% more.
So if the employee goes, goes out of network, the claim we got now is better for them?
If the employee were to go out of net, you're talking totally out of network.
I just look at some routine services here.
Yeah, right now, the, the, yes, you're seeing that 50% versus 25%? Absolutely. Employees are going to experience, if they were to have a claim outside of the routine office visits or prescriptions, or maybe an emergency room copay, if they were to have something more significant, you never know when that's going to happen, it could be an MRI, it could be a million different things, employees are going to be in a much better position with United than they would be with Blue Cross, whether they're in network or out of network. They're going to be in a much better position.
Sir, what's the possibility of an employee having a situation where it's going to cost them $1,000 or more?
Actually, with our HRA, as you might recall, and for the councilman that were not here when we implemented that, that is IRS allowed provision whereby the employer can pay part of the deductible without it being a taxable event for the employee. And we did that to, so we could raise our deductible, but, but basically self-insure and give the employees a better deductible than what we could afford. I mean, it would cost us a fortune to have a $250 deductible, which is in essence the net amount that the employees experience and the insureds. To your question, Councilman Ryan, we presently had over 8,000 HRA claims for the past year, 8,000 that we paid out. So it's, and that's a consistent number. It's different people every year, but we're consistently paying out as an employer since 2011, the total we paid out is 72,000. For last year, we paid out about 8,000, 8,500. So yes, it can happen and it can happen quickly. And there are situations that are ongoing right now, we have a really healthy group here, a great group from a health perspective, but there are some situations where somebody might need an MRI or a CAT scan or, you know, they're upcoming with some back or knee or whatever, those situations are going on, so they will experience that increase effective July 1.
Let me ask you a question real quick. I'm a little confused to be honest with you, and I sat in on the meeting and kind of had it understood until today and I'm...
I'm sorry.
Reverting back, well, I hear you saying we could save $14,000 to go with Blue Cross. I'm saying it's going to cost us $11,000 more to go, just over the plan we're at. So is that 14,000 savings?
Yes, 14,000 savings against what we would pay for United Healthcare plan renewal is not $14,000 savings versus what our current rates are.
But what I'm saying is, it's going to cost us $11,000 more to go with United, from what the front page says, correct?
That's correct, Mayor, yes.
And it would save us $14,000 if we went with Blue Cross.
Actually, if you look at the differential, I think what the city manager was saying is if you look at the differential between where Blue Cross is and where United is effective July 1, there's a $14,000 spread. Is that 14,000, is Blue Cross going to give us a $14,000 discount from present rates? No, it's only about a $2,000.
We could, if we went with Blue Cross, we could actually save $2,500 a year versus going with United Healthcare, which is an increase of 11,000.
And we don't know exactly what amount of that is going to be pushed on to the employees and what amount that's going to be pushed to the city, correct, out of 11,000? Anyways.
I could do some quick numbers, like real quick. I would, just looking at this and trying to do some math in my head, I'm thinking that the net cost to the city is going to be around, if we stayed with United, probably about $8,000 maybe, because there's, we have so many people that are on family plans and those employees pay 75% of that, the city only pays 25%.
Is that monthly, the total right there, the, in that little block around about the middle?
I'm sorry.
Is that what that's a month of cost? So it's about $204 a month more the employee will pay without the different employees that...
So here's a good... So, here's a, here's a quick way to look at it. The current premium for an employee is three-eight-five, let's just round it at that. If we were to go with United, the premium will be four hundred. So we're talking fifteen dollars per month per employee. We are sitting on fifty-two employees, so fifteen times fifty-two, that's what it costs the city right there. You may wanna add that up in that rule.
Is employees happy with insurance we had?
Yes, they are. I mean, we can...
Is the prescription plan they've got now, is everybody happy with that, that you know of?
Yes, actually, we've had, we had an employee that retired from the city, and when we were on Blue Cross prior, that employee had some services rendered, and it kept, and it was working out fine, except he was getting a runaround from his physician, you know, you need this, that, and the other, and so he picked another physician in the network. Again, this is not reflection on Blue Cross, but she was watching that occur. So when we moved to United a couple of years ago, he was the first one to go, wait, let's hold it, I've been going through all this process, now I gotta find a different doctor. He, within a month, said that's the best thing that ever happened to him, and we've had a lot of services rendered under United, and the employees have my phone number and call me, they call the city clerk, I don't know if they call the city manager, but they call me because they have the right to do so twenty-four hours a day, whether it be EMS, fire, police, or a regular Monday to Friday employee. I don't get complaints at all. They're used to it, it works well.
Chief Daniels, is your department good with it?
Overall, yes, Mayor. We haven't really had no trouble. I used to have the family coverage, but my wife has interest now, I dropped the family coverage, but overall, United Healthcare's probably been the best, of course. We had Blue Cross Blue Shield before, and we had numerous issues of getting stuff taken care of, but United Healthcare has been the best for us so far.
I'm absolutely good with it. And we're going through some things right now, and we've had Blue Cross having problems, and I'm, I'm loving the care we're getting right now. Please don't take us away.
We're having less problems crossing the border.
And it's cheaper out-of-pocket for the employee.
And you've got a wide range of providers, so they won't have to drop, have to go to another network where they'll charge them more.
Absolutely. Now, if we went with Blue Cross, the biggest confusion there is, remember I told you, we have the S network, and there's also the P network? And the S and the P doesn't have any name in particular, those are just what Blue Cross calls them. We would have the S network if an employee or an insured or a family member were to go to Blue Cross, to a provider and say, do you have Blue Cross, do you take Blue Cross Bluefield? Yes, I do. Great, they go in, and guess what? What if it's not an S provider and it's a P provider? It becomes out-of-network benefits. How do you explain that to an employee? It's horrible.
I mean, personally, I like the plan you've got now. I mean, it may have increased some, but the trouble you're gonna save from switching to another, like Blue Cross, I mean, that's just my own opinion.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion, I'm staying with what you've got.
Motion.
Stay with United, second. Motion, Councilman Johnson, second. Councilman Mead, Councilman Johnson.
I think you stay with what you've got, 'cause if you're not having any complaints and everybody's liking their service, you might have a few hiccups, but overall, it should be good.
Councilman Mead.
My rough math is seven-hundred-and-seventy-five a month the city would pay out.
Any other discussion on United? Hold on, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Jim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Now can I have the motion to stay with Delta for dental vision?
Dental, dental only.
Dental only.
Yes, and there's a big difference in the plan designs between Delta and Blue Cross. With Delta Dental, we have the best plan available. We have a two-thousand-dollar annual maximum and it includes orthodontics. Delta Dental is the premier carrier in the state of Tennessee, not the least expensive. Blue Cross came in with an incredibly competitive bid. The deductible is, with Blue Cross, is fifty dollars opposed to twenty-five dollars with United. And remember, we want people going to the dentist because so many diseases can be recognized early on, and if we raise that co-pay up fifty bucks, that's a lot, how many, what, how many hours does an employee have to work to pay that difference in twenty-five dollars? For that small amount on a two-year rate guarantee with the premier carrier in the state of Tennessee, I wish I had those benefits.
Motion, Councilman Wright, second.
Second, by Councilman Russell, Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Councilman Russell, answer. Who's open for second?
I would like to, I would like to say, employees, if y'all know of any that in your departments, let us know if this is not working, so when it comes up again, we'll know in advance, say, Sarah, there's nothing better.
I'm all over it. I, I checked the entire market.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate y'all so very much, because you could go a lot of different places, but I guarantee you that I, I dive into this, not just for the city chairman, for all my clients, but you all are a key account for me, and I greatly appreciate it.
You've done great, even though I just made you.
Thank you, I'll continue to do so.
Hold on, please.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Jim Johnson?
Yes.
Can you meet?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Ratt?
Yes.
Motion carries, is there another insurance we need to be talking about?
We need to renew the vision and life plan.
Those are gonna rate guaranteed right now.
Okay.
So we're good, we're good to go on those.
So the mayor's not gonna have something to eat, then?
No, well, it'll just pass through. And again, this is, we don't like talking about life insurance, but the life insurance plan that we have in place here, we do have an added benefit for our firefighters and police officers, it's called the Line of Duty Benefit, it's very important. I do this for all my union firefighters in St. Louis. If they have an NGR, you know, the other that we don't wanna talk about, there's an added benefit for them to pay out that we're not paying for in premium. Yeah, I guess we are paying for it in premium, we could get a lesser premium, but we're not gonna have that benefit, and these people are on the street day one, and we protect them on day one. So I, I think that's important to know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, appreciate your hard work.
Next item to discuss and possibly approve, a public safety committee. Kim, we discussed this a little bit last month, but it was out of town, and basically it's just in discussion, the council was, was looking at, we, we know in the charter that there, we have normal boards as far as fire police and things, and I, I don't think that's what, from what I, what I gather, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for something in between with us combined and maybe the fire and police, a committee, sort of like the rec committee, that is there to lessen and help the process move smoothly and not particularly lay all the burden on your fee or, or whatever, but that's kinda what they was looking at, and that's about as far as we've got. We held up to you, got back in town, and I just wanna say that whichever way the council decides to go, the committees have no power to hire, fire, micromanage, tell anybody what to do, how to do, or anything like that. They are basically an advisory committee that can come back to this council and advise us, and say, what's the direction they would like to go, or they would go see the city manager and, and talk to them, but as far as them coming in and doing anything with employees or partner heads, that's, that's not what we're looking for. I just wanna make sure that we're all clear on what was looked at. Do you have a comment on...
Do we have a problem with, that we know today that people not communicating with us, or you, or the manager, safety issue?
I, I don't know that, from, from me personally, I, I don't know there's, there's a lack of communication. I think that what it is, is, what I see is, is when you're joining your two biggest departments, and you say yes and you're on, and have one department head running it, I think it's good to have about two or three councilmen that say, as an advisory committee, to kinda watch that smooth flow that we wanna see, and I think that it gives employees a committee that they will come into instead of coming into the forecourt of the council and saying, hey, you know, we don't feel like it, it gives them a little bit more, although they still should become the captain with what's going on, but I think that's what we're kinda looking at as far as, and it gives the chief somebody that he can go to and say, hey, you know, Kevin, I'm wanting to buy four cars, or I'm wanting to buy a fire truck, and then Kevin comes in here and he throws it at us. It's a lot easier if you got two or three councilmen sitting there, and they're looking at it, and when you come to council meeting, the councilman will say, it was a committee thing, and the committee gives a recommendation along with Kevin's recommendation, I think it goes a little bit much further, but it, it's whatever the council wants to do.
I would agree with you, 'cause just, I just came up with the, the planning commission, and you have somebody on there that can help state what was coming out of the meeting. It happens that way with the beer board, if they're wanting to come in with a change to the policy, we've got board members on the beer board, so they can help explain it out on what the process, 'cause some of that stuff could be going on for maybe two, three, four months meetings, you know, like if the chief, just like you mentioned, like a car thing, it could be something that's like, hey, you know, what could we do, how could we raise some money to get the cars, and anyway, we have it in other departments too. So I, you know, and it is helpful, I mean, have somebody to know what's going on when we're having a meeting that can speak to it.
And, and the reason I didn't ask for a motion to approve it, there's really nothing to approve yet. Before, before we'd moved forward, we'd have to have some kind of bylaws that was drawn up by the city manager and the city attorney as to how that board, or how that committee, just like we did with the rec, and how it would be functioning, and the members would be on it, and, and I think that, you know, should, should come from the city manager and council as to how you wanna draw this, and yeah, if you choose that, that's what you can do. Do you have any input?
Well, I think in the case of the, so the recreation committee, for example, I think the biggest benefit there has been establishing a chain communication plan, the residents, volunteers who are users and participants of the program, and the department director to give regular feedback, to give assistance to establish expectations of what the taxpayers and the brokered users desire to have, and so we can set our expectations appropriately, whether it be for facilities, operations, and stuff for, and so I think there's definitely benefit, particularly from, from that standpoint. I think that does flow over into, if, if there's a particular service or facility citizens would like to have that we don't currently have, then this, this is a way to get feedback from the community and to set the expectations from the standpoint of cost and timelines and things of that nature, as well as the operational policies going forward. I guess, my, my, from the standpoint of this, my question would be, until we have permanently established the direction for the two departments, I kinda think maybe we need to make that decision first, as to whether they're gonna be officially combined or not, and then have the committee reflect what that final decision is. The two departments ended up not coming together, I might rather have two smaller committees that oppose one margin commit.
Who's open for discussion?
No, I mean, I agree with what you're saying about waiting, but I mean, even before that, we talked about, and it, it all just goes back to, you know, a lot of the things that those two departments have in anything, we kinda, you know, police department decides they wanna try to save money or use drug money to buy enough long rifles to be in the car, fire department on turnout gear and stuff like that, so it actually kinda helps those departments out when they have somebody that's gonna be, I think in the past always has, we always look to fire board, police board, and you know, you all recommending it, and whether it's, you know, they get a little bit of information, 'cause they can find out from chief and chief, like, a lot of stuff we don't need to hash out during the meetings, like, you know, really what's the purpose of having that? And, you know, they'll know, so it might be a quicker answer for me to listen to Lonnie and say, yeah, I was on, I'm on the HUB board, and he can tell me, yep, the deal's right on the money on that. So I, you kinda look at that, you know, just to, I do anyway, and that's just my thoughts, only if we have it, it could just be a little bit of a help.
What do we need to do to go ahead and set the motion, making the bylaws?
Make sure we join the two groups.
I mean, if you wanna set bylaws, then you could...
I think primarily, how many members is it going to be, what's the composition gonna Would be the first, first thing that you need to decide, and you work it from there. I mean, it's not, I don't know, Terry, it's what we just did.
And I think we do it the same way we did rec, it would be, Kevin would start drawing up something, and he sent us emails here in the rec committee to see what we thought about, about how many members, and then he'd done a rough draft, and we kinda all looked it over, and it was brought before council to approve, and it was ready. And, and you probably could go ahead and do that, and if these departments don't combine, the only thing you're gonna really change is the number. You may not want five people or seven people on a fire committee or a police committee, where you might want seven members on a public safety committee, 'cause it's a bigger part. But the scope, to me, with these, for fire employees, I don't see a big, hold on to that. But I, I would say right now at this point is just, we'd give Kevin permission to start working on a, something for us to look at and get with council and kinda see what members, you know, we're looking at as far as members, and then draw up like something, and then when this goes, we're ready to put it into effect.
So you're gonna have two or three councilmen, maybe a couple of citizens on it?
I, my personal opinion, I think you want at least, I, I was looking at maybe if you did public safety, you're looking at maybe a, a, either a five or a seven-member board. If you do a seven-member board, I was thinking you'd do probably three council members and four residents. And if you did a five-member board, you'd probably do two, three residents, and the executive, or the city manager will be chief, executive leader of the committee. But that's, the, the numbers is, just depends on what you all know. No fire board and police board, police board had two council members and the mayor, the mayor was a vote member on both boards, fire and police, so you had three members on, on those boards, but you had no residents. It was only made up of council. I think this committee needs to be made up of residents. Residents is involved in the police and the fire, not just one, and, and there's residents out there, that is involved in that. And, and there's residents out there that is involved in both, that, as said, like we said, almost, you know...
They're around it daily, helping them and everything, probably, so they know the in and outs of it, so that would be a big benefit, I think, having some residents on it.
So is everybody okay with Kevin drawing up, starting to draw up something and get with us and just kind of, just same thing? And it may come, and we draw it tomorrow in here and then...
Is there any advantage to having someone else do it?
I think what we'd probably do is take the format that we use for the rec committee, tweak it a little bit, send it out to the city attorney, send it out to the departments that will be affected by the committee, it'll fall under the subject matter, get their feedback, and we'll incorporate that into a draft and send it out to the council for you to take a look at. So, I mean, I think there'll be more parties involved if we work through it.
Any other questions about public safety? Anything else need to come through this council? Thank you all again, appreciate it, you.
I'll take a seat.
A floor is there.
Okay, he yield the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to re-go back to this health insurance for just a second, particularly for the two council, who are not with us through this whole long process that we've had since 2010. I think it's important for the city council to recognize that when we made the move from the state plan to go to an independent plan, like we've done, that we've saved almost $1,300, $1,300 by doing that, so...
It's good.
It's doing great, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned, I'll just take it.